Working with the Natural Resources Defense Council on a campaign to protect the boreal forest. And boreal is one of our largest forests on earth, but we're losing it at a rate of about a million acres a year to logging. And that's seven NHL hockey rinks every single minute, 24 hours a day. And a lot of this destruction is coming from the US tissue market. So for toilet paper, paper towels, and a big source there in that area is Procter &amp; Gamble, and they make sharmen toilet paper. And Procter &amp; Gamble, you know, Cincinnati-based company, which a lot of you have friends and family who work there. And they're doing a lot in terms of sustainability, and they're really trying. So we're here to help them shift to more sustainable options for their sharmen toilet paper. Because right now, they're making it with 100% virgin forest fiber, which means that it's all coming from previously untouched locations, like the boreal forest. So I will be here over the next six weeks, having petitions, writing letters to the editor, having kind of visibility events for this campaign. And I would love it if some of y'all could join me. We're having our campaign kickoff meeting tomorrow night at 7:00 PM at Mago Earth Center. And I could also put on the table some of our petitions. If you would mind signing those, and Eileen will come pick those up at the end. If you have any questions about the event, Peter's gonna be sending out some information even in the next couple of days. It's again tomorrow at 7:00 PM, so hopefully we can get that out soon. My name is Gwen, my phone number is on the little green flyers. And it's just, right now is an important time to be conserving some of our last wild species. The Amazon is burning, and our forests are disappearing fast. So this is really an issue that the people here at Cincinnati have a unique opportunity to step on, to step up on. Because P&amp;G is based here, and they really care what the people of Cincinnati think. And their campaign, sorry, my campaign, give me this one. Their shareholder meeting is coming up October 8th. And before that time, it makes them especially sensitive to public comment. So we really need to get people involved and to let them know that the people of Cincinnati care. I'd be happy to take any questions now.
The meeting, where it is?
Sure. The meeting is tomorrow night, Wednesday, September 18th, at 7:00 PM at Mago Earth Center, which is 700 Enright Avenue in Price Hill. It's also on a flyer I put at the back, and on some of the tables as well. Yes.
Do I say a word? You want to call?
Just really quick before, like, I think some of us might feel comfortable, like, signing this.
Absolutely, yeah.
Could you explain, like, what are some of the other options? So that we know we're not just saying, like, you're doing this wrong? Because I think a lot of people are like, we still need a quarter of a case there.
Absolutely. So we are asking them to switch away from at least 50% recycled, uh, sorry, from, shift away from at least 50% virgin forest fiber and towards more sustainable alternatives, like recycled paper, bamboo, hemp, wheatgrass, trees that have been grown and then cut down instead of just our virgin forests. And a lot of other companies have taken these initiatives. You may see recycled paper products in your grocery store right next to sharmen. Sharmen hasn't taken that step. And it's the biggest toilet paper brand in the country. And so if we can get sharmen and P&amp;G to shift on this issue, it could really create a domino effect and change the entire market. So that's why this issue is so important.
What products are you using for recycling?
I have a list with me, which I can pass around afterwards, that has some more sustainable options. I know Seventh Generation does a really good one. There's a toilet paper brand called What The Craft, but I don't think it's in a lot of grocery stores. There's also the Whole Foods brand, Trader Joe's, and I'll put some of those on tables as well, so you can have that take home with you.
Staples has recycled typewriter paper. They do charge more for it, which is a mystery to me, but it is available at Staples, actually.
Yeah, we're focusing on toilet paper specifically because we just think it's ridiculous that we're literally flushing our most important ecosystems down the toilet every single day when there are other options.
Thank you. Other announcements?
We want to get to Marlena.
Sorry, Marlena. I know. This has taken much longer than usual. I want to introduce my husband, John Mangan. He's over there, and this is a flyer about him and the work that he's doing as a retired person. He's committed to sustainability, local issues, all around sustainability. And one of the positions that he volunteers to do is being on the board of the Hamilton County Soil and Water Conservation District. As all of us know, the developers have a special interest in exploiting the rules. And so we need people who are there with the primary interest of sustaining the environment instead of using it to the benefit of developers. And that's his commitment, that's his dedication. Works every day on this as a volunteer. And, but, the catch is, he has to be elected. And it's not on the November ballot. It's not a public election that we're used to. It's a special mail-in election. And in order to vote, you have to ask for a ballot through the mail. So he's here to distribute the ballot request and would appreciate very much if you would request a ballot. And John, you want to tell them more of the details about, there's a few, like, rules involved?
I guess the big thing to realize with the Soil and Water Conservation District that most of you don't realize is, is that we're the ones that, for the Hamilton County, help with the regulations of Ohio EPA for stormwater discharge. So every time somebody does a construction site of any kind, for residents or a commercial, whatever, there's obligations to keep that soil from washing off into the streams because it not only kills everything in the streams, it's one of the main polluters, even though you wouldn't think it would be, but it causes all kinds of problems. So Cincinnati is a real stormwater issue, as we all know. So we're the agency that, for Hamilton County, reviews the plans with the developers and contractors, gives them advice, helps them modify their plans. And we go out in the field, and we do site visits, and help keep them in compliance, and then if they sign off. Also, we do the earthwork, which is really important in Cincinnati now because people building on hillsides certainly have to follow regulations or we have ramifications. Well, we do the permitting, the advising, the teaching, the training, and the compliance issues for them. So I've been on for three years, I enjoy doing it. There's more work to it than you think. I'm up for election again, and it's important that likewise people stay on this board because regulations can be twisted and turned and interpreted if you're not careful. There's got to be a robust enforcement of them. Okay, back to the election. It's not November, it's Ohio revised code, it's a legal election. It happens on October 21st in, at our annual meeting out in Sharonville. But most people don't want to come out to Sharonville on October 21st to, you know, vote for something that seems rather small. So we have an absentee ballot system that follows Ohio revised code. So to make it easier for you, Sue and I decided, well, instead of going through all the turmoil, why don't we bring the request form here? It's a very simple form. Let people fill it out that are interested, and then we'll even, we'll mail it in for you. And then you'll get your ballot in the mail, and you can vote for whoever you want to. So again, all we're doing is trying to make it real easy for people to say, give me a ballot, I want to vote on an important issue. Stormwater is a big issue, it needs to be managed, looked after, and we're the group that does that. So I don't want to take any more time unless you have any questions, and I'll stay around afterwards also.
And are you passing ballots out? Yeah. Okay, you fill out the two boxes.
And give them back to you.
And give them back to us before the end of the day. And there's a question, John, there's a question. Oh, you want a ballot, okay. All right. Marlena, thanks for your patience. I really apologize for taking up all this time. So while Marlena comes to the front of the room, Marlena, I want to announce that tonight at 5:30, Kate Schroeder, a Democrat, running against Steve Shabbat for Ohio Congressional District 1, is having a campaign event at the fabulous Probasco Mansion on West Cliff in Clifton. If you have never toured this wonderful place, you owe it to yourself. So come and meet Kate Schroeder, 5:30 to 8:00.
Seven.
See seven, and see the Probasco Mansion on West Cliff in Clifton. All right, where is she?
Excuse me, one last point, if I may, one last point for that election. You have to live in Hamilton, you have to live in Hamilton County. And also, if you decide to mail it yourself, don't mail it until October 1st, or it won't come. I don't know why, but that's the rule. That's why it's easier to give it to me, and I can mail it for you the right time.
So, want me to date it, John, we should put it after?
You can date it, you can date it anytime. Just don't mail it before October 1st. That's why it's easier to give it to me, because I can mail it. I'll make sure you see it.
So just, just before, Marlena, 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 which is in my head. The discussion about public schools reminds me that this Monday night, the 23rd of September, right here in this room, H. Louis Cirkin, who was the former president of the First Amendment Lawyers Association of America, probably better known here for defending the CAC, the Mapledork trial. He's argued in front of the Supreme Court in one cases. He's going to talk about separation of government and religion for the Free Inquiry Group. 7 o'clock, Monday night, the 23rd of September, this room here.
When do we separate government from religion? What the heck are we talking about?
Are we ready? Are we ready?
Last time. Is it okay? And then we're not in here, am I?
I'll make this quick. I put a thing on the tables, this is an email sent to me. I just had a two-year degree in environmental tech, and Elizabeth Warren said, nothing's going to help climate change faster than not using gas and coal. So I gave you this because I switched to clean choice, which is wind and solar, and I was astounded at what it made, a difference it made. I use very little electric. There are other companies, one is Arcadian, one is Dine Energy. I don't see where they promise 100% wind and solar. It's maybe 25% more expensive, but if you want to help your grandchildren, you could switch. So I left this because I was just amazed how fast it made a difference. Thank you. Oh, United, or, United, Duke Energy is now 14% wind and solar. Worldwide, it's 33%.
My bills went down.
Just to mention, if you're a resident of Cincinnati and you have not changed where you're getting your energy from, you are part of an aggregate, the first major aggregate in the country that's 100% renewable energy.
That's right.
So don't screw with it if you don't have a renewable reason to.
My Springfield township has that also. So Springfield township is part of that aggregate. Is it happening?
Star show. I hope you do.
Here we go, Marlena Brookfield, our candidate for the Cincinnati Public School Board.
We're way too excited about this. So I had, I had a lot of thinking about, what did I want to say to my friends here at Greater Cincinnati Democrats? And what I came up with was just a bunch of scribblings on a piece of paper, because there's so much that I could talk to you about. This group has been, it's been part group therapy. It's been an educational experience, made a lot of friends. And it's really helped me get engaged in my neighborhood, but also throughout kind of greater Cincinnati region. So, how do I get from that to I'm running for school board this year?
Yeah.
Because if you hadn't heard already, I am running for Cincinnati Public School Board this year. And I, thank you. And fun fact, I was the first candidate running for Cincinnati Public School Board to get on the ballot, to turn 100% to get on the ballot. Don't know what the problem is about getting a minimum 300 signatures, but I collected almost all of them myself, so, anyway. So what I want to talk to you about. One thing I'd like to start with, that I kind of brought up last week with Carrie Blume, was the idea of imposter syndrome. And it's really more of a gender issue where, and, and not anything against any of the men in this room, I'm married to a man. And I love him. But it is a very real thing, the idea that men can come into a room and just have confidence, whether or not they have any knowledge of an issue or anything. Somebody like, oh, let's say Steve Shabbat, will just walk into the room, and we all know who he is, so we listen to him. And some people just think, oh, he's so great, he's just so great. Does he really know what he's talking about? 22 years, and I'm just getting started? Please. So for me, as a woman who's never run for office before, who never even thought they would run for office, there's a lot of conventional wisdom that I've been confronted with. And it comes down to this question of, why, why are you here? How did you get here? And it's more, why do you think you deserve to be here? And maybe it's not people asking me that question right out, but I feel it. I feel it in looks that I get that say to me, who the hell are you, this purple-haired woman, who has, she is very passionate about things, but who the hell are you? Why should we listen to you about the school board? Why, why should we listen to you, and why should we vote for you? Very good questions. And what I really like about this group is that we ask questions. So I want to make sure that at the end, we have some time for that. But I had to really think about, why, why am I doing this? Certainly not for my health. But what it comes down to is that 2016 happened, and at that point, I couldn't just sit and be angry anymore. I vote, I always voted. The first time I ever voted, I was senior year in high school. I was pregnant, and it was actually to renew a CPS levy. Our social studies teachers said, they called us down to an assembly and said, if you will be 18 before this date in May, we need you right now to register to vote, because this levy is coming, we need you to vote. I would be 18 by then, so I said, hell yeah, I'm gonna vote. And this baby here is gonna feel the effects of voting to renew this levy. She's gonna know that we voted to make sure we're keeping this school district A-OK. But conventional wisdom would tell you that, well, she's not a teacher, she's not working in education, she doesn't even have a job right now. So why should we listen to her? Why should she be here? It's a valid question. And the only thing I can really say is that my whole life leading up to this point, I can point to moments that have informed me personally. They've shaped who I am, and they inform how I go about doing the business of democracy. So, I want to take you back to the year 1985, and I'm gonna pass these around. But when I was born, gas was a dollar nine per gallon, average income was $22,138 per year. Tuition to Harvard University was $9,800 a year. So very fascinating to me, 34 years ago. So what's changed since then? Asking rhetorically, what has changed since then? I went to preschool. I went to preschool, and everybody says, why do I have graduations for kindergarten and preschool? Well, at what point do we start celebrating our kids' educational successes? When do we start doing that? So the fact that my parents held on to this, and that's my parents right there, by the way. They held on to this, and I was just going through some boxes and thought, you know, well, I'm gonna share this, because this means something to me. I remember these teachers that I had in preschool and the impact they had on me. And it may be a small thing in the grand scheme, but that still lives with me. These were people that cared. Every single child in my preschool class, they believed in them, and they urged them to succeed. That means so much to kids. I have a lot of respect for people in the teaching profession. I thought at one point I would be a teacher. That did not happen for me, but as young girls do, we like to play dress-up. And one of the things that we did playing dress-up, we decided we were going to pretend we were teachers. So we, I found the picture of my two friends from my childhood were playing teachers. Now, this, this particular piece is a little more chip on the shoulder because people talk about, well, where'd you go to high school? That's the Cincinnati question, where'd you go to high school? I say, West High. And people kind of do, exactly. And to me, that's, well, what is that about? What is that, oh? Do you think that I'm not smart? Do you think that, what, what does that mean? And if you're thinking those things about me, you're thinking those things about hundreds of other kids that you don't even know, and you've not tried to know. So before you want to say, oh, West High, get to know some of our kids, get to know some of our alums, among whom Charmaine McGuffey, who is running for sheriff, she's a West High alum. Now we gotta cheer for our folks, we gotta cheer for our folks if we don't do well. But some people have said, well, maybe you just couldn't get into Walnut. You want to take that back? I have my score from the SEPP test right here. And I would love for you to see that. It wasn't about, am I smart enough? It was about, I was in one school from kindergarten to eighth grade. I knew these people. And at that point in time, it was, I'm going to leave everything I've ever known and go to a new building where I'm probably not gonna know anybody. And I was 12 years old. 12 years old. So I finally get to West High, and of course, you know, it's a school. There are things that happen when you have a bunch of teenagers in a building together, that some of them are crappy, we're working on it, the bullying has got to go. But you didn't see all the great things that happened there. You didn't see our drama program. You didn't see our marching band. You didn't see our kids at the time who, we had a JROTC program. You didn't see them going through four years of JROTC and learning to be leaders. You never saw any of that. You saw, West High, oh, that's the bad school. Oh, this one was a little, oh no, this is the right timeline. I tried to organize these in chronological order to kind of tell the story of myself and how I got to here. But my diploma certificate of achievement for passing the ninth-grade proficiency tests first time around in eighth grade. And what's interesting about this certificate is the name of the assistant principal on here. Says Laura Lumpkin. You know her better as Laura Mitchell, current superintendent of CPS. She knew me way back when. She looks the same, by the way. I don't know what her secret is, but she doesn't age. We gotta find that out.
No children.
But she... Well, she may not have had any of her own, but she has got over $36,000 now. And at one point, I was one of her children. So it's really exciting to me to see how far she's come from, this is 20 years ago. 20 years ago, she was an assistant principal at Westwood Elementary, and now she's superintendent of our school district. I like these to be interactive, because I like, I like when we talk and ask the questions. So I'm trying to make this a little more interactive. I don't, I don't like to hear the sound of my own voice, so this is really awkward for me. Going back to all the great programs we had at West High, I want to talk about our drama program again, because that was a place where I really started to kind of find my confidence and feel like, I can, I can do something. I'm, I'm not just Marlena that goes to school and goes to class and does work. I can do something special that means something. In 10th grade, we were doing a production of The Diary of Anne Frank. And I tried out, I wrote down that I wanted the smallest female part available. So when we came to school and the audition results had been posted, I was extremely shocked to see that my name was next to Anne Frank. And I thought, I wasn't gonna say that. I was gonna let my face say that for me next morning. But that was the point where, okay, you can't, what are you gonna do? You can't go back now. She saw, the teacher saw something in you, you better not let her down. So I went for it. And that was one of the best experiences I had in my time in CPS, was being part of that production. And then being in several subsequent productions until I graduated. But who ever talked about that? Who ever heard about, we did Anne Frank? We did The Stick Wife, which was, is actually very relevant to right now, because that's a play about a woman whose husband was one of the bombers of the Alabama church that killed four young girls. It was very, that was a very emotionally difficult production. And we had, all of, all of the KKK members were played by black students. So not only was it, this is very emotionally difficult subject material, but we really had to stretch the bounds of our imagination. And that's what learning is about. You're stretching the bounds of your imagination, you're getting new knowledge. It's helping you think about the world while you relate to other people. That's invaluable to me. And at one point, I thought, maybe I'd have a career on stage. I wanted to be a stand-up comic. And here is a program from our drama club showcase, Showcase My Senior Year. But sometimes things happen when you're a teenager and you are... What's the right, what's the right way to say this? When you're headstrong and think you're invincible, think you know everything, you don't. And I got pregnant my senior year of high school, and that was the point where everyone who had said, oh, you're a great student, you're smart, you'll be fine. You're smart, you'll be fine, just work hard, you're smart, you'll be fine. It was, oh, well, I guess you're screwed now. Forget college now. All of that just seemed to go out the window. And that put a chip on my shoulder, which you'll see is a pattern. If you've got... If you've gotten to know me at all over these past years, it's kind of a pattern, is getting this chip on my shoulder that spurs me into action. I thought, "Well, I've already applied to UCM and been accepted. So, who says that I'm not gonna go? Who says that my life is over now just because I'm pregnant?" So, I went to graduation day, the day before, having gone into preterm labor, which thankfully, they were able to stop because I was only seven months. And I had hastily write a speech the night before because I was speaking as salutatorian of 2003 class of Western Hills High School. I did it! People down there, "Oh, I did it!" So, then I went to college. Have a three-month-old, taking a full course load. Oh, my God. Why did I do that? All the things that I wish I could've gone back and said to myself, "Slow down. You can do this. It just might take longer." That was one of the areas where I really could've taken the time to really figure out myself and, you know, now that I have someone else to care for, how does that factor into my plans for my life? Somehow, I did it. I managed. So, I managed somehow in four years to pull it off. I got, well, I'm Phi Beta Kappa, but I'm also a graduate of the University of Cincinnati, magna cum laude, with honors in linguistics. Conventional wisdom said that none of this would be possible or should be possible because you had a baby as a teenager, your life is over. So, how am I here?
Marlena, what makes you qualified?
So, no, that's the point. So, what does make me qualified? Well, the first thing that I say to that question is something that I learned in school board school that should've been obvious, but wasn't. And it is this, "There are no requirements to run for a school board." You don't have to know the first thing about children or education to be on the school board and that terrifies the crap out of me. I know that now. It should've been totally obvious. But now that I know, okay, we need to make sure that people who are on a school board know about education and care about kids. And ideally, support public schools. Maybe it's crazy. But, so, I haven't been a teacher. I haven't had some fancy title to go along with my name that gives me credibility, but I've been a CPS student. I was a CPS student from kindergarten to my senior year. I saw what worked well for me and what didn't. What worked well for my friends and what didn't. I have a CPS student right now. She's been in since kindergarten and now she's a junior. I've seen what's worked well for her and what's not. And what has worked well for her friends and what hasn't. I've also been a thorn in the side of our current board. I live there part-time at the board office. If you want to know anything about what they're working on at this point in time, historically, what they've been working on, I collect all the minutes from all the meetings I go to. Come to my house. I'm running out of space for all the binders for all these minutes. So, knowing what's going on, I think, is one thing. And I have a real problem when a long-sitting board member, I ask a question as a parent, "Why is this policy being decided this way?" And the answer I get is, "I don't know." "I'm sorry, but I'm your boss. We're all your boss. We voted you in. We can sure as hell vote you out. You don't get to tell me I don't know unless you then say, 'But I'll find out.'" We've come to expect a bunch of crap from our elected officials. We've come to expect that there's this game-playing and all this stuff that just makes you crazy in politics. And for me, I have to ask, "Why? Why do we just accept it?" And all kinds of people have given me advice since I started running, saying, "Oh, no, you need to change your hair." Well, why? Why do I need to change my hair? "Well, you can't get elected with..." Why? Why can't you get elected? What does this have to do with what's in here and what's in here? What does it have to do with either of those? And that's what you should be voting for. You need to find the person whose values and priorities align with what you have in here and in here. And no empty words or playing to a crowd. We can see through that. That's why all of us are here and why we ask such great questions because we're sick of being... I made it a word. And we know that we deserve better. So, part of why I'm running is because we deserve better as electors, but also, our kids deserve better. Our kids deserve better than people who are gonna sit in a room and have no problem telling people, "Well, this is just how we do things. This is just how it's done. Well, we decided this because we thought X, Y, Z." Well, who did you talk to to get there? Did you talk to parents? Did you talk to teachers? Did you talk to students? And that's where I have a really big problem because while a board member is not the same as a direct representative, someone like our member of Congress, you do vote for us. And so, to me, that means I am beholden to you for my decision-making. I have my own ideas, but if I'm not hearing from the voters, from the people in the schools, our staff and students who are most affected by these decisions, then I'm not doing my job. And I personally, I don't see that having purple hair or body piercings or a tattoo or having had a child at 18 or any of these things that I cannot change about myself and will not change about myself. I don't see what they have to do with how effective I can be as a board member. Someone who is willing to put the energy and the work into doing the job is who needs to be there. I can't tell you that's me. I can only prove to you, I'm consistent in showing up. I'm being present to hear the people that need to be heard from. And that's what I'm gonna do until they make me stop, until they have to throw me in the ground. That is what I plan to do. So, that's me. That's my why. And I would be, I know, I know, I know that we love questions, so I hope that we have time for questions. Because if we do have Ben Lindy come, I want you to question him.
Hi, I'm Tony. I'm Marlena's husband. I have to run. Actually, I work up the street. So, I have to get back to work really soon, but I did wanna say...
Put your closer to your mouth.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'm Tony. I'm Marlena's husband. But I just wanted to say real quick, what Marlena, the point that Marlena just spoke to about actually getting out and talking to people. Okay, I have poor witness to this. She is going all over the place. And part of the reason in the start of her speech about her getting all of her signatures so early before anybody else had considered it is because every night, she was going out to community councils and LDMCs and all kinds of local democratic groups everywhere and talking to people and asking them questions about what is important to them. What is, and not just as a stump speech. She was going out and talking constantly, constantly, constantly. She is putting the work in out there. And, I don't know, somebody needs to bear witness to that. Somebody is walking the walk. There are a lot of people that are really good at talking the talk and I'm telling you, Marlena walks the walk. She will go out there, equity, all of this. Everything that she's talking about, she believes it. That's all I have to say.
Hi. Thanks for your explanation of your background. Appreciate it. I just wanna confirm what I understand about the school board race that's coming up. It's a seven-member school board, yes? How many, it's a field race, right? How many slots are open now that people are being asked to fill with voters?
I don't worry. Cool trade. Okay. So, normally, it's just three seats this year. And the seven seats are staggered. But, this year's a little different because the woman who was appointed in March, she is filling a term that is unexpired. So, she will be on the ballot for reelection, but for a two-year term. She has two people running against her. If you wanna talk more about that, I'll be here afterward. But, that's how the race is looking this year. So, there are six people running for one of, for one of the three seats or three seats. And three people running for one seat. I do, even though it's a write-in campaign, I still count Ozzy as running. He's a write-in.
But his name will be on the ballot because he paid the money. His name will be on the ballot, but you have to write in your vote. Somehow.
Was it the first? Oh, all of it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Hi, I taught at Woodward High School for 25 years. And in that time, I saw two school board members, Lyndwood Battle and Catherine Ingram. And I have no doubt you would be that kind of school board member. But I would like to know maybe specifically about what would be some policies that you would want to change.
Absolutely. I love, I love that. One of my favorite committee meetings is the policy committee for the school board. So, thank you for asking that. I love being able to sit as they review the policies and I go over them really quick. And what jumps out to me right away? Down, right down. And then as soon as they're done deliberating... They, I feel like I have some habits and they know them because Dan Hoying, who is general counsel for Cincinnati Public Schools, he is in the policy committee meetings. And as soon as they're done deliberating, he turns around to see if I have something to say. Sometimes I do, sometimes I don't. But, specific policies, the biggest one is Board Policy 2255, Equity and Excellence in Education. It's been there on the books for about four years now. And we talk equity to death. But, as I've been going around to our schools and seeing what's going on with my daughter's school and all around the district, we're not living up to that. And some of it isn't just, "Well, it takes time to get the ball rolling." Some of it is, "It's not happening because people aren't doing the work." And that's just at the root of it, that's what's going on. So, we need to make sure that our administration is getting out all the procedures necessary so that our buildings are following the equity policy. But, I would even say, "Let's look at the equity policy. Sit down and take a look at it and figure out what exactly are the parts that we need to do better at." Because we are failing kids. It's not that the schools are failing. We... Oh, okay. So, equality and equity are different in that equality is same across the board. And equity is, you give where it's needed most. And there are ways to do this, but it's gonna take work. It's gonna take a lot of people sitting down and talking things to death. That's, I think that's really the issue at heart of things is you need people to be willing to sit down at meetings and talk things to death so that there's a good plan going forward. And this equity policy is one where you're gonna have a lot of people that no matter what, are gonna be upset. And you're gonna have a lot of people that are gonna be happy, no matter what. So, on this one, I need to, this is why I need to hear from folks. Because I have an idea of what's gonna work, but there are other people who might have ideas that are even better.
So, that's exactly what we wanna hear. We wanna hear, "What are those ideas that you have?" I mean, I think that's part of what your question was about. I also wanted to say that I don't think you can that conveniently dodge purple hair. I think there is a correlation between what you decided to do with wearing purple hair and what's in your head. And I think you can actually make that a kind of campaign, purposeful kind of issue to talk to people about why you make the choices you make and who you are. That's just my feeling, rather than saying it has nothing to do with the quality of your brain. So, what are some of those plans that you, because I think CPS just yesterday got a D, didn't they, in a statewide rating?
I guess those ratings are state ratings.
Yeah, they're state ratings, but...
They mean nothing. They mean nothing.
They mean nothing, nothing?
They mean more money goes to charter schools is what they mean.
That's what it means.
Yeah, okay. So, they mean something.
It's a corporate takeover of public schools.
So, what would you like to see put in place?
What I would like to see? One thing that I have brought up before, I helped run a GSA Gay Straight Alliance at Dater High School. And one thing that I have brought before the board is, wouldn't it be nice if we had a directory for all schools that had an organization like this on campus for their LGBTQ+ students? Because studies, countless studies have shown that just having one on campus helps reduce rates of suicide and depression in students who are LGBTQ+. And just having something available for kids to know, "Oh, well, at this school, they have this." Or, "I'm at this school and we don't, but I know that this school has one and there's people I can talk to to know that I'm not alone. There's people that can support me." And I would love to have that be included in the student handbooks that get distributed at the start of every year.
I'd just like to add that I'm really pleased to hear how important drama was in your formative sense of self and everything. And I assume that means you'll be an advocate for the arts and education.
Absolutely. Well, you just gave me an in to talk about another idea that I just had recently. After attending the organizing training on Saturday, we had students from Woodward come. And I was lucky enough that at the Black Family Reunion Parade, the Woodward Marching Band was there. My daughter's in marching band. She's at Dater High School. It's a combined West High and Dater marching band. So, I'm a band mom. But, I got to hear them play while they were waiting to march and they sound great. They are ama, no, they're amazing. They are amazing. And then I find out Saturday that they have to pay $110 annually to participate in marching band. I know that for Trinity, she has to pay about $10 a year. Which, that's reasonable. That's not gonna break the bank for me. But, it might be different for other families.
That's where you're talking about that equity thing. Because West High has band boosters and has a big foundation that supports. Woodward doesn't have that. So, why doesn't Cincinnati Public make up the difference? They should be.
Exactly. So, I can't see things like this where I know that my daughter is benefiting from having alumni association and boosters to help offset the costs of her marching band fees, but their band doesn't get to travel. but their band doesn't get to travel to away games. They did when I was in school, but they don't now. I don't know if Woodward's band travels. And why? Why don't we have money for that? Why is it that we talk a big game in CPS about how we educate the whole child and we have all these offerings so it's a well-rounded education with fine arts, music, but we can't afford marching bands?
Because $100 million is going out the door to charter schools and vouchers. $100 million a year. Imagine to support our own kids, that would make a huge difference.
Just statewide or what?
That is Cincinnati Public School only. $100 million a year out the door to charters and vouchers.
Questions? Other questions?
Yes, I've got one. I was very moved a few months ago. Bill Maher had on his program a high school student from Connecticut who was in a class that successfully sued the school board for omitting the civics courses. Are you confident that our students in Cincinnati are getting adequate training for being effective citizens with the critical intelligence and the sorts of sense of empowerment that voters should have?
No. No, absolutely not. And I will say that, one, we're not giving enough time in curriculum because we're testing on basically everything except social studies, history, citizenship, civics. But also, the kids that I see on a regular basis, and they know what I do in my daily life. They know I'm out there waving the flags and yelling and doing what I do. But they tell me, "What's the point? Does it matter?" And that's when it gets emotional for me. Because to hear these young people who don't have hope, who think, "Why do anything? Because what's going to change?" I can't hear that and not think, "No, you have absolutely everything to gain by this. You have to ask the questions. Don't just accept what someone's telling you. Don't be afraid to ask why." And anything that I can do to help them realize, you know, there is a future. There is something for you to live for, and here's how you can get there. I want to make sure that they have that. It's something that I felt like I could have had in high school, and I just... I want all of our kids to have someone who's going to fight for them like that.
That's here for Marlene Brookfield. Wonderful, thank you. I let you go on a little. You realized that I let her go on, right?
Yes, of course.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you for your patience with our meeting today. And we have wonderful things happening in the next couple of meetings. Please come on back. We have good things waiting for you. We have been thoughtfully prepared for your coming. So come on back. We hope to see you again. You guys are great. Thank you for putting up with that. Make sure you get all of those voting forms back to the people that need to get to voting. And make sure you give your $2 for your table space today. Thank you for coming.